Okay, good evening everyone. We're gonna call the Hammond City Council Public Haring Order. Just for information, we have a council meeting will take place first, and then right after the council meeting, we will go into the Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award Ceremony. The council meeting should not last no more than ten minutes. You know, we don't have that much to come, so... Depends on how much we all talk, but I think we're gonna get through it pretty quickly. So, uh...so we're going to start the public hearing. Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt, Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Okay, we have nothing for public hearing, so we'll go right into our regular meeting. Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt, Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
We're gonna ask Pastor Shelton Myers from the Greater St. James AME Church to please lead us in prayer.
Good evening. Father God, we come this evening once again thanking you for your glorious day, God, and watching over us throughout it, Lord God. We just thank you, Lord God, for being God and God all by yourself. We ask, Lord God, that as you are here present with us, God, we ask that you lead us right now, that we will be on one accord, oh God. We ask that you watch over the leadership of this city, this town, this country, even the nation, oh God. Let us be on one accord, oh God, that we can glorify your name with all we do. I bless every part of this agenda, that every endeavor may be done to the glory and honor of your name. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
We'll ask all veterans and active military to please render the proper salute. Councilor Hill is answering questions.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna entertain any council reports at this time. We do have one person, one person would like to speak, and she is on the agenda. Spring Wary from the Greater St. James AME Church. She'd like to come forward and state your name and your address, and then you can address the council.
Uh, good morning, good evening. Spring Wary, 105 Ruth Drive, Hammond, Louisiana.
105.
Ruth Drive, Johnny Blunt is our council. I came forward because our church is having a 150th anniversary, and it will be March 26th, the fourth son of this month. The reason why I call up more about this, because this is very, very important to our community, our city. We are the first black established church here in Hammond, and it's a lot, a lot of backbones and a lot of people that we're standing on that's meant a lot to our community. Also, we are inviting each and everyone to come to our anniversary. We will be having a proclamation read from the city of Hammond, and also, we have been nominated to be in the National Registry of Historic Places. And this is, um...it's the Historic Places is the federal government official list of historic properties where the preservation listed in the National Registry provides recognition and assistance preserving our building, well, our church, our, um...our church or our place of worship. And everyone is invited to attend the review committee meeting at which the nomination will be considered. The community...the committee will meet at 1:00 PM on Thursday, April 6th, um...of April the 6th of this year, at the Capital Park Welcome Center, 702 North River Road, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. And we would love for anyone, you know, any councils that can stand behind our church when we go to this meeting, that can support us and support our church. And also, like I said, everyone is invited to this, um...to this historic moment. We Great St. James Church, this is our history. It is presented in the name of our creator followed by the pioneers who now dwell in their eternal homes as a reminder of the foundation of the present church. The Greater St. James AME Church is a branch of American African Methodist Episcopal Church, if anyone didn't know exactly what AME meant, stand for. And, um...it was the first black church in Louisiana that was to establish in Hammond, Louisiana. It was organized in 1867 by the Reverend Charles Dags, the father, Sophia Dags Gibson, and, um...served the church faithfully unto his death. So we have a lot, a lot of people that has really, really helped us along the way with our church, and we're also asking for the help, help from the city too, to continue to support our church as this historical event, as this historical moment, so, you know, we can, um...have it still standing, you know, still standing strong. And as of right now, it's still standing strong, it's still going strong. This is our pastor, Reverend Myers, let you in prayer. Everyone know that the AME Church is a, um...is a sister church, it's a, um...
Well, it's a sister church from around the world. AME Church is around the world, connectional church. But Greater St. James has been established since 1867, as you said. That first building, it burned, and we reestablished another building, and it's been built 1925. And like you said, it just, it was two people who, uh...put their mortgage up to make sure that this was built. So we just would like everybody to come and celebrate a momentous occasion of a century and a half of being here and a part of this city. So we'd just like you to come and celebrate, so that we can continue to grow strong and do what we have to do to make this city a great city.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Panapinto?
I'm just excited that everyone's here tonight on behalf of Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award, and I'm gonna bypass any comments, so we can move forward and get to the awards.
Awards, okay. We would, uh...are there any businesses, any audience that'd like to be recognized? All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from March 1st, 2017.
Some move.
Roll call please.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, resolution's O, business none, new business?
Number one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into intergovernmental agreement on behalf of the city of Hammond with Tansville Parish Government for road overlays on North General Pershing Street, showers lane, Short Street, Cage Street, Harold Avenue, Reed Street, Scalen Street, Quarter Street, Richardson Street, and Mississippi Street. Dr. Lacy Landrum.
This is the overlay agreement from the parish that was sent to us. We're just giving them permission to go forward with our one cent sales tax overlay. This is our money coming back to Hammond, and the streets are there listed.
Okay. Any comments from the, from the audience, from the public, any comments from the city council?
I just have a question. You know, in the past, they've used something called, and I probably made it wrong, micro-surfacing, which has not held up.
We refuse to allow that to happen.
Thank you.
It's basically just a cover-up.
Yeah, General Pershing has fallen apart, and it was overlaid not that long ago, so...
What micro-surfacing is, is spray painting the road with a oil texture and some gravel, rather than chewing the asphalt up down two inches or an inch and a half, and then relaying it with asphalt. Uh, it's, it's, it's a quick cover patch that we really don't think is, has any long-term effect, so we don't allow that to happen anymore, at least as long as I'll be here for the, for the roadways in city Hammond for asphalt.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Williams, you had also mentioned North General Pershing. We have worked with Maurice Jordan at the parish, and Robert Morgan took a ride together. There is some projected construction going on at campus for a new dorm, and so we're not going to overlay part of that right now, which will have the heaviest use. They, they will overlay that after the construction is complete sometime next year.
I know in front of the lab school, there's a couple spots that are bad.
Right. They're gonna try to go as far up as they can to avoid the construction area, and then they'll do the, the other part of North General Pershing after the construction is complete.
Thank you very much.
Seeing as what happened at Home Depot on Magnolia Street and Hewitt, we're gonna go ahead and wait, and we'll do some of the roads and the neighborhoods right off of General Pershing.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, resolution two?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a notice of grant and agreement award accepting $796,088 in federal funds from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, National Resource Conservation Service, and a grant to match up to $125,731, which includes 10% of the total construction cost for the Hazel Street Bokeh Project. Dr. Lacy Landrum.
This money is not being pulled out of grant match, it was actually allocated in the fiscal budget not la...uh...last year. So we already have $167,000 committed towards this project, which will cover the $125,000,[662.82][662.82]$126,000 required for match, and this is just an estimate at this point. Chuck Spangler and his office did an excellent job in communicating after the floods in August with this grant to get this funding pulled down for us, and so we're fortunate to be able to move this project forward.
Chuck did that?
Chuck Spangler did it, and Jay Pittman and his office worked very diligently on this.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck. Okay. Any comments from the public, comments from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilwoman Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolution three?
A resolution to approve change order number four on the sewer rehabilitation infiltration inflow repairs project number 616-31401. Chuck Spangler.
Yes, this is change order, should be hyperlink. This is the fourth change order. This project's been going on about three years. The conclusion of this project's April 19th of this year, so we have about a month left, but prior to the conclusion, we projected final quantities based on what we think it'll be in the next month. And the reason for this is we've had some problems with some lift stations, primarily the one on Phoenix Square, number eight, which is one of our main lift stations. So we've been in touch with DEQ revolving loan people, Will Bartlett in particular, and he has agreed that we can take some of these funds and rehab some of our lift stations, and the mayor has directed us to take these remaining funds that we have, which in this case is $400,000 roughly, and take care of some of our lift station inventory, which is way behind on upgrades. So the nature of this change order is a reduction in the contract amount of $458,123.88, if you see that, for a final contract amount of $3,970,000, and we were trying to stay around $4 million, so this works out perfectly. There will be a final, which will be probably a slight change on some of these numbers, but it shouldn't be a significant, you know, maybe 1% or something, we may, when we actually finish up in another month. So I would recommend approval of change order number four.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Some move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilwoman Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolution four?
A resolution for council to purchase an automatic sandbagging machine for the street department from Coveting Sales and Services, Inc., RFP 17-14. Total cost $104,885. Janet Thurman.
Good evening.
Hello.
The purchase department put out RFP 17-14, um...for automatic sandbagging machine. We received one proposal from Covington Sales for $104,885. This was approved part of this year's budget for the street department. They have $105,000 available to make the purchase in their fixed asset account.
That means we're gonna get a lot of, much more sandbags this year, huh? So we could stock up on sandbags for the hurricane season.
Basically, when the floods come, instead of being behind the curve and us out in the streets sandbagging for folks, we can, we already have 2,000 sandbags stored, and we can stay ahead and put these sandbags on trucks. In the past, we've been throwing a pile of sand in the street and shoveling it in front of neighborhoods. Now we can actually get into the neighborhoods, put sandbags in front of the homes that we know will flood, so we're trying to stay ahead of it to keep people from having a flood, 'cause we all know what, how that affects our families when that does happen. So this'll help us out in the future tremendously.
And sandbags are complimentary from the city doing those people.
Yes. This particular machine will, will produce four bags at a time with a conveyor that will be throwing them up on the trucks that we can stack and get out to different locations. So instead of throwing the sand out in a pile, we have four trucks that can go in different directions. Three neighborhoods, we know for sure that flood. Over toward Mooney Park, Whitmore and Woodbridge flood very heavily, so hopefully we can keep these folks from getting water in their houses.
All right. Any questions from the public? Questions from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Some move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilwoman Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Do we have another, um...resolution? We have another one, 105? Says, "A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development and the city of Hammond, for the city to receive up to $639,435 for airfield drainage improvement, phase three construction, H0125."
Hey, everybody. Good evening. Yeah, Jay Pittman from Spangler was here two weeks ago and asked for approval to, for the city to authorize, to award the contract to the lowest bidder. The state was just waiting for that to be done, to issue the contract to us, and again, it's not a grant matching contract, that's 100% paid by the Department of Transportation, and this is phase three of our, our on-field drainage project, not connected with the, the off-field drainage project that the city funded right now.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the, from the public? Any questions from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right. Adoption of ordinance, none. Introduction of ordinance?
Introduction of an ordinance to authorize the mayor or his designated to accept the former Hammond U.S. Army Reserve Center located at 1290 Southwest Railroad Avenue in its as condition, and sign all documents related to the transfer. Dr. Lacy Landrum.
You have two attachments. One is an ordinance that Andre has prepared to accept the donation from the federal government. The second attachment is the contract, the quitclaim deed from the federal government for the building. This is the Army Reserve Center that is located on Southwest Railroad Avenue. We have been working on this project for several years. It actually started under Mayor Foster and was continued under Mayor Panapinto after his careful eye over on that building and seeing a good asset that the city could recover. Um, it will be used for the fire administration headquarters. Also there, along with Hammond Fire, will be the state fire marshal. They will be able to offer plan reviews from there, which will be the only location on the North Shore doing such activities, which means that builders and developers will be coming to Hammond to get those reviews performed.
For the parish, for the entire North Shore?
For the entire North Shore. It's also a convenient location if they don't want to go down to the New Orleans office or to the Baton Rouge office to come to the North Shore, to Hammond for that. There is no cost to the city for this building. They did include, uh, three environmental reports. One was a 625-page report of lots of history of the building and the overall environmental condition. That showed that there may be a little bit of lead still left from when they had some fuels and some other materials there, but those were just very small, minimal traces. They did not even register. There was an 80-page radioactive material report. They do that after any, um, army or any military installation has been there. There is no traces of any radioactive materials. Um, and then there was a 72-page report that discussed asbestos. There may be some asbestos in the mastic, which is the adhesive that glues down the tile in the building, but that's the only presence of asbestos. They, they looked at, I think, different, 21 different locations throughout the building, testing the ceiling tiles, um, some of the other goo that's around some of the joints of the lead pipe and whatnot. So overall, um, it'll be, it'll be some investment required to make it ready for people to be able to work out of, but it will provide a nice training facility and another lay-down yard and some other potential for the city.
Okay. Just for the public, we, just to let you know, we're actually going to, if we introduce it, we'll have a public hearing, so most of the questions that we ask will probably take place then, so, just for you, just for information. Okay? Any, so in this case, we won't really entertain questions, because we know we're just gonna do the introductions, so, pleasure to counsel.
Motion to adjourn, Mr.?
Roll call please.
Councilwoman Beard. Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing set for Tuesday, March 28th, 2017.
Okay. Second ordinance?
Number two, introduction of an ordinance declaring movable property as surplus and not needed for a public purpose, and providing for a donation to benefit public safety. Three Dodge Durangos. Janet Thurman.
We're asking the council approval to surplus three Dodge Durangos. Pending the approval, we ask that the mayor has authorization to donate all three vehicles to the Roseland Police Department.
Okay. Pleasure to counsel.
Some move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved, and public hearing is set for Tuesday, March 28th, 2017.
Motion to adjourn, Mr.?
Some move.
Second.
So we're done with the, uh, with the business of the city, now we're gonna go, roll into the Hammond City Council, Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award Excellence Ceremony. So give us about five minutes, we're gonna transition, and then we'll start, okay?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming on tonight on behalf of your esteemed committee. We are happy tonight to join in with the Hammond City Council in the Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence Ceremony. Today is March 14th in the year of our Lord 2017. Beginning prayer, Pastor Dennis R. Abear.
Maybe stand for prayer. Our God, our Father, we thank you again for this opportunity to serve our community and to recognize those who have done so well. Of course, we ask that your Spirit would be here with us even on today. We thank you for our leadership. We pray your grace among them as well. We even ask that on today, Lord God, as we would reflect, as we remember, that we can also be inspired to serve even more. We ask all of these blessings, in Jesus' name we pray.
We are happy tonight to honor two individuals from within our neighborhood, our church and our community, in the persons of Dr. Clara V. Robertson and Ms. Myrtle Cook. Thank you, and thank you for accepting. Our welcome tonight will come from our honorable mayor, Pete Panapinto.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. It's great to have a good crowd in attendance tonight. I had the privilege of being in Ms. Cook's classroom when Tamara Ann Perry was there, and, um, she gave me some hard candy that she said that she spent out of her own pocket to give kids supplies that they didn't have and candy, and is still teaching there today. I just wanna say, it's a privilege to be here, Ms. Robinson, to welcome both of you, Ms. Cook, and, uh, to let you know that I'm from an educator's family. My mother was a history teacher and loved what she did for so many years, and I'm proud to be here, and looking forward to listening to Ms. Harold speak, and just thank everyone for being here, and it's a privilege to be in your, in your presence. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our opening remarks on tonight, recognition of officials and Mrs. Earlene Dangerfield will come from our honorable councilperson, Mr. Lamar Marshall.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to take a couple of moments and recognize our elected officials, and then, then spend some time talking about Ms. Dangerfield, but I think we have our, our marshal, 7th Ward Marshal, Marshal Ferris in the house. Hello there. And also, you may not recognize, you may not know all of our elected officials on the council, so I did want to take the time, because we do have some long-serving councilmen and women, and the women with us tonight, but Councilman Blunt was not able to be here tonight, he had an emergency, but we do have Councilman Hood, who represents District Two, he's a third-term city councilman, and Councilman Mike Williams, who represents District Five, also a third-term councilman, and then Vice President of our council, Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard, serving in her first, you know, first term as a, as a councilwoman from District, um, uh, Two, I mean, I'm sorry, District Three. And I'm just Councilman Lamar Marshall, and I represent District Four, and I'm a second year, second-term councilman. We also, everybody met the mayor earlier. Uh, we do have some pastors in the room, so if you guys want to take just a quick second just to stand up and let everybody know who you are. I know Bishop Sole is in here, so I know he's, and that's our pastor, Bell, so please, if y'all want to, we want to give reverence to our pastors in the room. Well, you, now, you have, now, we spoke about the AME Church for a second before you got here, so you have to let everybody know who you are and your significance.
...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
like to say a, a couple of words, I'd love for you to come up and say it now if you want to. And any other time that you want to during the program, you can stop us. We'll listen to whatever you have to say. Because you mean a lot to all of us in this community.
Thank you, Councilman Marshall. At first, I would like to say good evening to everyone. And I am so elated that you all took the time out of your busy schedule to come and celebrate with this ceremony. And I am very happy for the person that has been chosen to receive my husband's award, Ms. Cook and Ms. Robertson. I don't think there is anyone else in the area at the present time that's more deserving of this than you all. So, I would like to thank the mayor, the councilman, and the committee for keeping this going in memory of my husband. And I would like to say again, on behalf of the Dangerfield family, we thank you all for all of your support and may the Lord continue to bless you. Thank you. The occasion. Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence. Whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a preeminent historian and founder of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, created Negro History Week to recognize the accomplishments of Negroes throughout the history of the United States. Whereas in 1976, the celebration of Negro History Week was expanded to include the entire month of February and became known as Black History Month, a federally recognized nationwide celebration that provides opportunity for all Americans to reflect on the significant roles that African-Americans have played in the shaping of United States history. Whereas, many African-Americans have contributed to the development of the city of Hammond and their African-American Heritage Museum, the Second Saturday Breakfast Organization, and the Martin Luther King Park Association. Whereas, the city of Hammond desires to create an annual award to recognize individuals within Hammond who have positively impacted the lives of African-Americans. Whereas, the city of Hammond desires to recognize local, including Tangier Bahore African-American, past and present, who have made significant accomplishments that have positively impacted the city of Hammond. Now be it resolved that the city of Hammond will present each year during the second meeting in the month of February, the city of Hammond Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence to a deserving citizen or citizens who have made significant accomplishments that positively reflect on the city of Hammond or who represent through their actions and commitment the willingness to go the extra mile and make a positive impact in our communities in the city of Hammond. The city of Hammond will now appoint a committee of five members for the purpose of selecting the recipients for recognition by the second meeting in January of each year. The committee shall be made up of a nominee from the Tangier Bahore African-American Museum, a nominee from the Tangier Bahore Parish Library, a nominee from the Martin Luther King Park Association, and two at-large members appointed by the council president. The term of the appointment shall be for two years. This resolution is approved and adopted on the seventh day of February 2012 and signed by the following council people: Michael A. Williams, Jason Hood, Johnny Blunt, Robert Martin, and Lamar Marshall. The occasion. Dr. Clara V. Robertson biography. The words from the poem "The Road Not Taken" by Robert Frost says that "Two roads diverged in the woods, and I took the one less traveled by, and that has made all the difference" signifies the life of Dr. Clara V. Robertson. Dr. Robertson has taken the road that was less traveled while being an educator. She is a native of Independence, Louisiana, in a penance. She is the daughter of the late Reverend B. Self and Mrs. Lou Bertha Kimball Self. A resident of Hammond, Louisiana, she was married to the late Mr. William Robertson. She has three children: Dr. Sheila Robertson, Mr. Pierre Robertson, and Dr. Shirley Robertson, eight grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. Dr. Robertson has been an educator for over forty years. She was educated in the Tangier Bahore Parish School System, received her BA in elementary education from Southern University, received her master's in education in guidance and counseling from Southeastern Louisiana University. Dr. Robertson was the first African-American to receive a master's in 1967 and specialist degree in 1972 from Southeastern Louisiana University. She received her doctorate in education from the University of Denver. Dr. Robertson began her career teaching as a sixth-grade teacher at Berger Elementary School and a basketball coach. She was a guidance counselor at Greenville Park High and Hammond High School. Later in her career, Dr. Robertson became the first black to teach at Southeastern Louisiana University Laboratory School where she taught seventh grade. In 1973, she became the first African-American faculty member of the College of Education at Southeastern Louisiana University. While serving in this capacity, she was a supervisor of student teachers and graduate professor in the Department of Education. In 1980, she became the Director of Continuing Education and later retired as Director of Developmental Education. Dr. Robertson was also the first African-American female to serve as a school board member for Tangier Bahore Parish School System. She served as president of school board and as chairperson of various committees. She also was the first African-American to be elected as president of the Louisiana School Board Association and the state president of the Louisiana Counseling Association. She holds numerous civic, social, and religious affiliations. Dr. Robertson is an active member of Baker's AME Zion Church. She has served in numerous capacities. She is a deaconess, chairman of the trustee board. She has served as Sunday School teacher, superintendent of Sunday School, Sunday School and Church Secretary, local president of the Women's Home Overseas and Foreign Mission Society of the New Orleans District for over twenty years. She has also served the district level of the Louisiana Conference of the AME Zion Church as district president of the Women's Home and Foreign Missionary Society for the New Orleans District, Louisiana Conference Secretary, delegate to the AME Zion General Conference, financial secretary, and other areas in the church. Dr. Robertson has a passion for teaching and education. She instilled in her children the value of a quality education. She has been a pioneer for education and has always promoted this in her work, career, and church. And we're fellow Zionites. I present to you, Dr. Clara V. Robertson. Good, good evening.
Good evening.
I am almost without words. I sat and heard all that she said, and I had no idea I had been doing all of that. I apologized to the kids who had to sit under me, to the parents who had to send them my way, and tell you I was only trying to do what I thought was right. And it's hard to do that when you're working in an area such as Hammond. Hammond is home. You're family. We are equal workers in the church, in the home, and in the school. I sat and I got a little jealous when I saw Ms. Earlene get up here because I know her. And she's been doing the work that I like to do. And I want to say, "Earlene, keep it up, girl, because I'm pushing right behind you." I want to thank my family today for being here after all these years, listening to Mama, listening to Grandma, listen to Cousin, listen to that woman. And you've done it. You made me proud. And you've given me at least a few more years of glory and honor. Thank you again. And to bring up my church. My church is here because my dad was my pastor all those years. And I'm afraid that half of what I had to do was because nobody else was doing it. And Daddy says, "Girl, you can do it." And to give honor to my mother, who on the day that she passed away from this earth, she told my dad, "Give Clara my work." She did. And he told me after she passed that day, because I felt like I wouldn't live again, and he said, "You've got a work to do. Your mama said, 'Tell you, you must stay here and do the work.'" And I've tried that. But further still, it is a pleasure to see you here, Reverend, brothers, sisters, ladies, Ms. Carter. It's just nice to see ladies up here. And I told you, if I would try and name it all, I'd mess it up. So, for the rest of us who are sitting here, let's keep up the good work. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Robertson, and thank you, Councilman Mike Williams, and for the presentation of that award. Council President Lamar Marshall will come now with the introduction of our speaker.
Okay. We're gonna get one in the middle there. Let's cook. Okay. We're gonna introduce Antoinette Harrell. Mrs. Harrell, Ms. Harrell is a, is a renowned genealogist researcher. She's the producer and host of an educational television program entitled "Nurturing Our Roots in New Orleans." She's the author of "Nurturing My Family Tree Activities" and coloring book for children. Ms. Harrell was appointed honorary Assistant Attorney General for the state of Louisiana in 2003 for her studies in genealogy. Harrell's works have made crucial contributions in preserving the history of African-Americans in southeast Florida, southwest Mississippi, and southeast Louisiana. Ms. Harrell collection has been donated to the Center for Southeast Louisiana Studies and Archives at Southeastern Louisiana University as a part of the Antoinette Harrell collection. Harrell also has a collection at the Amistad Research Center in New Orleans. Ms. Harrell works in the study of genealogy, has been recognized by People's Magazine, Nightline News, and many other media publications both nationally and internationally. In 2007, she led the state of Louisiana to proclaim October as Family History Month. In 2013, Ms. Harrell received the Associate for the Study of African-American History Award in Washington, DC for her work in her, as a short film producer. I met, I met this young lady, I was at the library award ceremony a couple Saturdays ago, and I met this young lady there. We were talking about history and the desire to preserve history. So, after our conversation, I came home and I spent some time, and I was Googling just the preservation of history in Hammond. And I was really spending some time reading about Dr. Reed's house, which was the first black doctor in Hammond. You know, he had a, he had an office right there across from First County Bank. So, I was Googling and reading about it, and then I found a blog. And so, I, I was, I was interested. So, I called the person from the blog, and I says, "I don't know who you are, but I'm Lamar Marshall." And she says, "Well, I know you." I says, "Really?" She says, "Well, I just met you Saturday." I says, "So, you're the same person who we were talking about? So, now I'm reading about you, and now we're connected again." So, when I met her, I was inspired. So, I wanted her to come and speak to this crowd about, about her work and what she does preserving African-American history. So, Ms. Harrell. And she's very self-sufficient.
Thank you to Councilman and to all of you for having me. Good evening, everyone. I am delighted to be here because this is home. Tangier Bahore Parish is home. I spent most of my work, my research work, traveling throughout the United States, spending lots of hours in the National Archives in Mississippi Delta, climbing through attics when I had two legs. And I still go through attics. I enjoy it. But what an honor to honor such a noble person in Women History Month, the contributions that women have made to our state, our parish, and our world. To ensure that we preserve the rich history of our great parish, we must continue to preserve the history, the heritage, the culture of diverse people who helped build this parish. History plays a major and vital role in our everyday lives. We learn from our past in order to achieve greater influences over our future and the future of our parish and our state. It is sad to say that each day we are losing these priceless treasures, sometimes by natural disasters, but more often simple neglect. When we lose these treasures, we lose a piece of the history of our parish and our state. As we embrace history, it is not always pretty, and sometimes it can be very painful. But nevertheless, we must embrace our history. History comes alive, alive when someone is able to not only read about the past, but talk with people like the pioneers that we are honoring today. We visit the libraries and museums and artifacts, and we appreciate the images and learn from the oral interviews that's left behind. Historic preservation is important. Preserving artifacts is important. We find many reasons to preserve history, and I may add honoring the pioneers who stood the test of time, who faced the many challenges and difficult times to make our parish a better place for humanity must be commemorated. All across the parish, I've found historic treasures preserved within the local libraries in Southeast Louisiana Center for Louisiana Studies. For the past ten years, I have worked hard to preserve the history of African-American, African-American people in southeastern Louisiana and southwest Mississippi. As community leaders, understanding culture is our business. Whether you live in New York, Louisiana, we must work hard to establish relationships with people, people who have different cultures and diverse. As we explore culture, it is important to remember that we have much in common. A person who grew up in New York would probably see the world very differently than the person who lived and grew up in Louisiana. But both people know what it is like to wake up in the morning and look forward to the adventures of that day. We are all human beings. We all love deeply and want to learn, have hopes, dreams, and admirations, and have experienced pain and fear. At the same time, we can't pretend that our culture differences doesn't matter. We can gloss over differences and pretend that they don't exist, wishing that we could be alike. And we can't pretend that people was not discriminated against and it does not exist. We should ignore, we cannot ignore the great contributions that people of all colors have made to our great parish and state to make it a beautiful place to live in. Each cultural group has unique strengths and perspective that the larger community, community can benefit from. People from different cultures have to be included in decision-making in order for programs or policies to be effective. If we do not learn about the influences that cultures, groups have made to our mainstream history and culture, we are all missing out on a very important view of our society and our community. When I first moved back here from New Orleans, Louisiana, I got started doing my own genealogy research. That quickly was put on hold, simply because there was so much history, rich history, that wasn't talked about, tucked away in the attics, thrown away. And I found my niche, preserving that history of those that stood up, both black and white, to make this place a better place. And we must work harder now than we ever have to embrace the foundations that our forefathers and foremothers fought against to make sure that discrimination does not take the ugly root that it had once before. So that we can make this world a better place, we can make this parish a greater parish, we can learn from each other, yet embrace all cultures, all people, no matter what denominations of faith, colors of our skin, gender practices or choices. That's what makes us unique. And let's keep that uniqueness. And each one of us are committed and should commit ourselves to making sure And each one of us are committed and should commit ourselves to making sure that we work hard for the future generations that is yet to come, and for those that we stand here to honor and members of our ancestors who paved the way. Thank you once again.
Thank you, Ms. Harrell, for those inspiring words. Now, the biography of Ms. Myrtle Cook. Proverbs 3:5 and 6, one of her favorite scriptures. "Trust in the Lord with all thine heart, and lean not to thine own understanding; in all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall..." He didn't say "he will," he said "he shall." That's a promise. "...direct thy path." Ms. Myrtle Cook's seventh child, born to the Reverend and Mrs. Johnny and Angelina Gray Cook of Hammond, Louisiana. She attended Greenville Park Elementary and Secondary School under the leadership of Mr. J.W. Davis Sr. Ms. Cook attended Southeastern Louisiana University and Southern University with a BA degree and Master's plus 30 in education, special education, and administration. She has been an educator for over 56 years in the Tangier Pohwa Parish School System, teaching from Kentwood to Ponchatoula. Presently teaching at the Greenville Leadership... Hold on, how can I get that wrong? Presently teaching at the Greenville Park... That's what's missing. Greenville Park Leadership Academy under the leadership of several principals, Mr. J.W. Davis Sr., Mr. Manley Youngblood, Mr. Ed Dillon, and Mr. Samuel Richardson, Dr. Beth Moles, Ms. Janice Williams, Ms. Marquita Jackson, Mr. Terran Perry, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Hill, and presently, Dr. K. Williams. Ms. Cook's first teaching assignment was at Pine Ridge Elementary in Hammond under the leadership of Reverend A. Evans and Mr. Eddie Robinson. She then traveled to OW Dillon in Kentwood, Louisiana, under the leadership of Mr. Dillon. She also taught at Crystal Street under the leadership of Mr. Bader. Ms. Cook, some years later, began teaching music and began a choir at Perrin Junior High and D.C. Reeves in Ponchatoula under the leadership of Mr. G.T. Carter Sr. She has taught music in her home, community, and church, teaching ages 6 to 60 on how to play an instrument and read music. She has proudly served her church, Greenville Missionary Baptist Church, under Reverend Dr. M. Mixon and Reverend Dr. Jerry Hannibal. Ms. Cook is a very active member in church, playing music, directing the choir, and music instructor in the Vacation Bible School every summer. She is an instructor of music and organist for the Third District Bogachetta Baptist Association as a choir member and director for over 50 years. She has been the director of music in the following parishes: Tangier Pohwa, Washington, and St. Tammany for the Third District Bogachetta Baptist Association under the direction of Reverend Shomak, Reverend W.M. Mixon, and Dr. Mallory Callahan. Ms. Cook has been an instructor for music at the Louisiana Foreign and Home Mission State Convention under the direction of Dr. Thomas, a musician for the Senior Mission Auxiliary of the District and State Baptist Convention, organist for the choir at Little Bethel Baptist Church in a meet under the leadership of Dr. Willett Vernon for over 40 years. The Israelite Church and Zion Travelers Baptist Church in Independence under the leadership of Reverend Booker and Reverend Robertson. Ms. Cook, if you have any enemies, it's nobody but the devil because you've been so busy. It just popped in my hay. Ms. Cook is one who has a coat of many colors, a person who goes and looks for lost sheep of those who need assistance and carries the burdens of everyone she encounters. She loves and enjoys teaching to help develop the minds of children and people in general. We are to live as Jesus Christ mandates us to live, for His glory, and to let His light shine so that others may see Him in us. "Many friends of people have entered my life and assisted me and given me much success." These are her words. "I shall always remember them, my special students, piano students, and adults. Thanks again, and may God forever bless and keep you in His perfect peace." And I thank you for teaching my daughter how to play piano. Isaiah 26 and 3. "Thou wilt keep him in perfect peace, whose mind is stayed on Thee." Ms. Myrtle Cook.
All righty. I'm gonna speak now. Yeah. All right. Good evening, everybody. It's so good to be here, you know? You all just don't know how happy I am. You've made my day. First, giving obedience to God, the head of my life, my pastor, Reverend Dr. Jerry Mr. Colway, my principal, Dr. K. Williams, Ms. O. Johnson, Ms. Assistant Principal, Sister Gwen Bell, and others. It gives me so much pleasure, so much, so much joy to know and to receive such an honorable award on behalf of Wilbur Danielfield Excellent Awards Committee. I accept this recognition with much gratitude and kindnesses. Whatever I've learned in my life is to the grace and mercy of God, you know? I must say, Brother Wilbur Danielfield was a man of power, and he believed in justice for all, for all who he encountered. I will always remember him and his family as Christian people who trusted God. B.B. McKinney wrote these words. He says, "Let others see Jesus in you. While passing through this world of sin, and others your life share view, be clean and pure, without and within. Let others see Jesus in you. Your life is a book. It's a book before their eyes. They're reading it through and through. Say, does it point them to the skies? Do others see Jesus in you? What joy will be at set of sun in mansions below or beyond the blue to find some soul that you have won? Let others see Jesus in you. Then live for Christ both day and night. Be faithful, be brave, and true, and lead the lost to life and light. Let others see Jesus in you. Keep telling the story. Keep telling it. Be faithful and true. Let others see Jesus in you. To know God is to love Him, to walk in His ways. Be an example for Him, and let His light shine so you may glorify Him. For it is by grace that we've been saved, you know? Through faith and this not for ourselves, yourselves, is the gift of God, not by works that we should boast. No, 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 no. For we are God's workmanship created in Christ Jesus to do good works, good works, which God prepared in advance for us to do. Part of that work that God planned for us is a special responsibility to extend God's love to everyone we meet, everyone. We should model the same behavior as Christ in our own lives with the people we come in contact with every day. Show grace and mercy, love them as God loved us. We are to live as Christ mandates us to live, for His glory. We ought to be that example. It is with the joy and the love for Jesus that I have so, so many friends that have really helped me along the way. You just don't know. Everywhere I go, the joy, the joy, the joy. Brother Will and Sister Pam, you know I go to their estate sale sometime. And they just joyfully, joyfully, I meet so many friends there. You know, that's what God wants us to do. Wherever you go, wherever you go. I have so many parents that come out, coworkers, they help me, mission friends, just a lot of people. They just come and they help you. It's always somebody to help you along the way, always, to do the work of Jesus. Dorothy Law Notice wrote a poem, and its title, it's entitled "Children Learn What They Live." I want to share it with you for a minute. It's food for children. If a child lives, or if children live with criticisms, they learn to condemn. If children live with hostility, they learn to fight. If children live with ridicule, they learn to be shy. If children live with shame, they learn to feel guilty. If children live with tolerance, they learn to be patient. If children live with encouragement, they learn confidence. If children live with praise, praise them, they learn to appreciate. If children live with fairness, they learn to have faith. If children live with security, they learn to have faith, yes. If children live with approval, they learn to like themselves. If children live with acceptance and friendship, oh, they learn to find love in the world. Proverbs 3:5 and 6, as Sister Bell stated, is one of my favorite scriptures. "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and lean not to your own understanding." And Isaiah 26:3. "Thou wilt keep me in perfect peace, whose mind is stayed on Him. Whom I trust it thee." Thank you again. Thank you again. I love you, I love you, I love you. You know, I never thought I'd be here. God bless you. Thank you. And I pray God will keep you. Keep you in His care. Keep you in His care. This is gonna help me live a little bit longer, you know that? Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. God bless you. Oh, yes. I didn't think I was gonna make it because I hadn't had an accident, but I'm walking pretty good. God will lead you, He will guide you. Thank you, baby. This is my sister here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beard and Councilman Jason Hood for the presentation of that award. Let us again give both our honorees another round of applause. At this time, we will hear any other comments from either our Honorable Mayor or our Council President Lamar Marshall. If not, Pastor Abir, will you come with the closing remarks and the blessing of the food?
What an awesome program today, and I have been privileged to attend a few of these. And I gotta say, it is an honor to see two esteemed and well-versed women who have labored in the vineyard quite well. Let's give them a hand one more time. Thank God for them. Lamar asked me to give closing remarks, and I didn't quite know what that meant. Lamar specializes in civic service. We're trying to train him in the church. Y'all pray for us. But when you tell a Baptist preacher just a few minutes, we don't really know what that means. But I'll keep my remarks very, very brief. My family and I have been a part of this city for the last 12 years. We've been privileged to serve here at the Beacon Light Church. And the other day, I was reflecting on the book that I read by leadership guru Stephen Covey. And it's a must-read for all of those who are interested in personal development. It's called "The Seven Habits of Effective People." In one of those chapters, he talks about the stewardship of time. And he talks about in that chapter how nobody is allotted time in infinity, that time is limited. At the end of that chapter, he gave a very morbid task. He asked the readers to sit and to write out your obituary. What would people say about you when your time has expired? And I thought about that today as we're reflecting upon these living legends. She rose in International Women's Month. How fitting for the city of Hammond to recognize two women who have made great contributions. And as we think about how we use time and what folks are going to say about us, it gives us a sense of living with some type of intentionality, understanding that time won't last for everybody always. And when I thought about that, my mind ran to the scripture that says that a wise man or a wise group of people leaves an inheritance to their children's children. And so as we serve, we are leaving an inheritance. An inheritance is something that somebody else walks into, and they didn't have to sacrifice for, they didn't have to sweat for, but because somebody was thinking ahead, they made preparations for the next generation. And as these two young ladies have so graciously worked, you guys have paved the way for Johnny Come-Latelys like myself, who are just getting started in this work, that we have an inheritance now. You were trailblazers. I want to thank our mayor and our council for seeing fit to have such a program and such recognition. Let's bless God for them as well. But you know, moving forward is not, I've learned that leadership is not just on one person. Leadership is not just on one body, but leadership is a collective thing. Because everybody plays a part in this. All of us have skin in the game. We stand to benefit from leaving a legacy to our kids. We stand to benefit from leaving a legacy to our kids. And to leave a legacy, I thought about three things. First of all, to leave a legacy, we must be inclusive. We must be inclusive, because one is too small of a number to do anything great. One people, one party, one gender, one persuasion, is too small. But when we come together, we're always better, and we can always do greater things. I believe that there's great promise for our city because of intentionality like this of being inclusive, saying we realize that Hammond was built on the backs of many people and many cultures and many sacrifices. We're not just a homogeneous society, but we are a society that has been made up through this rich gumbo that makes up our culture. But then I thought about not just being an inclusive culture, but being an innovative city, that we're not just called to be those who preserve the status quo, but we're called to think outside of the box. Innovators answer questions. Innovators provide answers. Innovators don't pass on to the next generation the problems that face the current generation. We should be a city that's innovative, because we cannot afford to be an eight-track city in an iPhone society. We have to be innovators. We have to think outside of the box. And so when the future becomes our priority, innovation becomes our desire. And then finally, we have to be a culture that embraces investment. Investment, that we have to invest today for what we want to see tomorrow. We have to invest not just resources, financial resources, but invest our time. We have to invest our talent. We have to invest our service back to our community, because all prosperity, all success starts with investment. And so I thank our city for having this time that we can invest during a city council meeting to say Hammond is a better place because these two ladies lived and that you served. Let's clap our hands for them one more time. If you wouldn't mind standing, we're going to close out in prayer. They tell me that there's food right beyond the doors. I know we're not in church, but can you just reach over and grab the hand of that brother, that sister that stands next to you? There's nothing more important to an individual than the human touch. Gives us the ability to relate, gives us the idea of oneness. Father, as we close out this time of remembrance and recognition, we thank you for how we were inspired by two she-ros this afternoon. We thank you now for the leadership of our city as always. God, you said in your word that we shall cover them in prayer, that your Spirit would guide their decisions, and that they would direct and lead righteously. We thank you right now, and we cover even our city, Lord God. We understand that the prayers of the righteous avail much, so we thank you for the prosperity of the city of Hammond, for all of those within its border, Lord God. We ask even on today, yes, we're faced with many problems, but give us wisdom, give us strength, give us the willingness to work together, but we understand that there's no problem too hard when we all come together. Father, again, we give you glory, and we give you honor, and we give you praise. Bless the food and the fellowship that's beyond the doors. We love you in Jesus's name. Amen.